First changes to the subject to you. Firstly, to correct the typo on the credit copies in the chairman's announcements as they corrected. And secondly, in fact, that question asked by Council Hackett was the question of the last paragraph of his question, not the first two. So with those amendments, if anybody else has any comments to make within the minutes? And second, as an amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would object to the amendment that you offered to the council, and I would wish to move that the minutes do not accurately reflect what happened on that council, on the other council meeting, all the employers and the treatment I was subjected to. I therefore suggest, and I move, that the minutes correctly reflect the meeting held on 20th of March. And should be amended as Council Hackett wished to ask Bourbon the fourth question as reproduced below, as allowed in the constitution, what was prevented from doing so by the chairman's intervention. Council Hackett's objection is out of rule, and it's only able to redefine power. I would move that that amendment is added before my question. Thank you.
Okay. Second, right. You want to speak, Mr. Hackett?
Yes, I'm supporting this motion in that it doesn't accurately reflect the verbal transcript that is recorded, and that all of the incidents that Derek said there say that he did object, he would have been in plenty of time to present it, but prevented from doing so. That's my reason for saying.
Anybody who wants to speak to the motion? All right, take the vote on that. Are those, although in favour, the motion proposed by Council Hackett, to take the right answer, one, would you like to show and take the vote? Question, are you in favour of the amendment as proposed, you say yes, against, no, abstain, say. Can we vote? And your vote is on the votes? Is that it? Yes. Righty. No. The motion is lost. The minutes will be, will be as by the proposed. Do you accept that? Thank you very much.
It's quite a duel, isn't it?
Chair, I have a few questions. There are no questions.
Do you think it's about the dignity?
Number nine is police and crime commission. Excuse me, commission of this authority in the past to receive the authority and time from the police party. I'm happy to say that Tim Passwell has come to us weekly there, pleased to welcome him. He is, of course, has been known in the past. I can say I'm so pleased he is the police commissioner, but none of us reveal or shall ever ask why. I would remind members of Suffolk County Council that it's supported by the Police and Crime Panel, which the statutory role of all police officers is counted. And this council has four councils on the Police and Crime Panel. So please make clear in terms of policy that we're interested in dealing with non-operational matters. So, Tim Passwell, please, I see you taking your next, excellent. Now, in fact, to work with all of us.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And thank you very much for asking me along to speak. Thank you. I don't know whether I was champagne or something. Well, here we are. I just thought I'd better answer that sort of question about Andy Barnes, that erudite commissioner from that government name in Kent, that's actually where my mum came from. I'm sure because I can answer that. She was clearly struggling with what the job description is, so I thought I'd just be lying and paying no interest. Perhaps it's me, because she hadn't worked out after eighteen months here what she's supposed to do. Well, number one, everybody, you are, the commissions are entirely responsible for the budget of the Constabulary, amongst other things, so the primary budget holder is no longer the Chief Constable. They are the Police and Crime Commissioners across England and Wales, and that's a very important check. The whole point of this reform is to make the Chief Constable, be it he or she, to focus on operational policing matters, not to get involved in areas where, in many cases, they have not had a great deal of experience or training, so we're looking at areas such as finance, estate management, HR, legal services, fleet management, et cetera, et cetera. That then becomes a responsibility much more of the Police and Crime Commission, I'm not for a moment suggesting I know all about that, but you get the right people in position to move the business forward. And of course, policing is a business of sorts, of course, a very important public service, and we do need to remember that, it's not about loss or profit, but it does need to be run efficiently and effectively. So the budget in Suffolk is £124 million, of yours and my money, I'm in the areas of guardian, looking after the taxpayers' interests, it's certainly not mine. We have a property estate worth around about £100 million, two and a half thousand people work for the Constabulary in various businesses, and it has a fleet of 520 vehicles, so it's quite a sizable part of the overall Suffolk economy, and one of those great public services that we have around the way. And indeed, policing in the UK is, if you like, one of the premium standards that are held up in high esteem globally. We police by consent, and the opinion principle set out in 1839 by another politician, of course, Robert Peel, still holds true today. And we police by consent, we have an unarmed police force, et cetera, specialist units, and all may now continue. So that's a very important point, Mr. Barnes, to remember, you are actually overall accountable to that very large budget and that very large part of your economy. You also have to set the precept, I'm happy to report that we've frozen the precept for two years running in Suffolk, not because I was getting off on some mad cap test, but I do think that those people who think we ought to keep banging up tactics and precepts need to understand those in society, while less fortunately many of us around this room, in jolly ways of our time, we pay more attention to them, and of course, make sure that any business that is being run, including the Constabulary, is run as efficiently and effectively as possible. Those of you on the Police and Crime Panel will be interested to note that the first time we set the precept, the under-spend was over £2.5 million, notice of yours and my money, and in the last year just gone, the under-spend was £1.25 million. Just to remind you, 1% precept increase is £382,000. That money's rolled over into the current year, so I think we probably understand why we felt there was no need to put the precept up this year. So that's the precept, the budget, you also hire or fire the Chief Constable, we appointed our new Chief Constable just over a year ago, Douglas Paxton, who many of you have met, and then the other major thing that we have to do is to deliver and give to the Constabulary the Police and Crime Panel. And you can't read it from there, but that's its list. It's all online, of course, as we're into the modern government, and that is the plan that the Constabulary legally allows to deliver over the next three years. One year's just been completed on that, that started in April 2013, and that is the requirement that the Chief Constable and all his team have to deliver that plan as set out by policy. So that in a nutshell is what it's about. On top of that, the Police and Crime Commission is there to act on behalf of the public interest and hold the Constabulary to account. Ultimately, I suppose, the Police and Crime Commissions are responsible for the totality of policing, and also, I wouldn't say responsible for crime, because that's the sound of the dark. But I hope you get the point. There are other things that are coming up that are very important, a lot of changes coming forwards. We take over Victims' Commissioning in October this year. Farting on in this country, successive governments, I feel, have ignored the plight of victims, be they individuals, and of course, we need to remember businesses are victims of crime, and that has very important implications for our economy and the wellbeing of many people. If a business goes bust, be it through fraud or whatever, activities, arson and so on, and you're employing 50 people, we need to recognise that 50 people and their dependence and the way of livelihood can be severely affected. So it's a complete load of nonsense for others to think that business crime somehow is less important. Do you realise it? It is important, and the economy is a central part of our Police and Crime Panel. These guidelines are making Suffolk a safer place to live, work, travel and invest, and I think that probably recognises that, not only is the economy important, but the issues for transport, the very large tourist and visitor economy we have, as well as our own personal security, be we young or old. There are basic tenets around the Police and Crime Panel, one of which is respect for law and order, and I think Saudi society for too long has declined. The importance of the families as a struck unit in society, there is no doubt that social cohesion is very, very important, and we have to do what we possibly can as a society here in Suffolk to try and build that back up. And I do consider the family as a very important part of that, and young children, the role models and so on, and we all have a shared responsibility, and we're trying to moralise the people about their particular living circumstance, but we need to get it back up to the top of the agenda if we are to move forwards. So that is a sort of rough outline, and I hope they get a bit more clarity in what is going on. So, moving on, where are we? Have we been post-raise in months? Police and Crime Panel's been published, we've dealt with the budget, the precept, and there has also been some investment in the last year, over a million pounds in automatic number plate recognition. This is going out into the rural areas as we speak, there needs to be recognition of A N P R, for indirect remembrance, doesn't just occur on the major routes that we have out in the rural areas, and that in our residential areas of towns, it's very important so we can trace criminals and other activity that is clearly not present. We're really beefing up these specials, we have two rural special teams, we've just announced a marine capability based down in the beach, so it will help along down all the ways and the whole of Suffolk coast. Put investment into the A fourteen, we need to do more, and that's been very useful because we can say to the Highways Agency, yeah, we don't need any more briefing about budget cuts, we found extra sources to put money in, it's about time you people did the same. We're meeting, I think, Graham and I will be talking about this next week, coming up very soon, to look forward to do about the oil crossing, lay lines, road service, et cetera. Investment in technology such as body oil video cameras again, something that we've done, and very, very useful, it makes the police force a lot more efficient and more effective. And I'm happy to report that I think morale's a lot better than it was eighteen months ago. Part of that would have been caused by the uncertainty of what police and crime actions were about, many there were some who thought if you had a political position there, they might go around turning the Chief Constable, et cetera. Please remember, there is that dividing between what is operational and what is not, and I heard the day thinking about it here in Suffolk, we won't take a vote on that one, Chairman, if you don't mind, but it is there, it's a really serious position, and I'm very, very proud and privileged to have been elected, and I do take it extremely seriously that, forget all the party politics, I am there to elect it to regard for the best interests of Suffolk. Number one, that will always be the case, whatever happens, and that is really, really important. And I say that because I think the rank and file in the police service, including back office staff, as well as frontline constables and PCSOs as specials, perhaps have a little bit unloved, but that extra investment over there in the end does make their job a bit easier and a bit better, and I think it shows that even in a time of austerity, if we do it properly, we can start to make quite a difference. Now, that's a good sign, there are, of course, clouds on the horizon, and I mean clouds on the horizon as well, because it comes down to the pound debts or the pressure on the financial results that we all have. I'm not downbeat about the future, I'll come back to the slightly more optimistic side, but there's a role for all of us to play in that in a few minutes. The other thing I just want to say is there is a complete commitment, regardless of what you might aver to the basis of the safety neighbourhood team and community policing in Suffolk, that is a bedrock of what we do, that is not up for negotiation and booting it out, as long as I'm there, that will not happen, and the Chief Constable of Ireland had discussions about that, and he has to make sure of that to maintain. There may be changes, of course, to what happens in safety neighbourhood teams, but for the best, safety neighbourhood team were originally designed to work with other agencies and community safety, it was not all about policing. And I do want to share with you, there is no way the police can solve crime and do everything in their own. We all have a role to play in that, as Robert Peel said all those years ago, the public are the police, and the police are the public. Every citizen has a moral obligation to report suspicious or damaging circumstances, and we have to make sure the system is sufficiently attractive that people feel confident enough to do that. I'm not sure nationally we're quite there, there has been a lot of bashing of the police recently, quite a lot of it has been justified, and this, of course, comes back from issues of senior leadership, or in some cases, not here, a lack of it, and that needs to be put right as a matter of urgency. So what's best for Suffolk, and of course, we have to talk about control. Now, I may want to share one statistic with you all, if I had gone ahead and agreed with the Chief Constable of Suffolk, the Chief Constable of Norfolk, and the Commissioner of Norfolk, that would have been the guy controlling Suffolk. The business case didn't stack up, this was stayed quite clearly by all financial officers from Suffolk and Norfolk. Now, these are people who absolutely know about finance, okay, just think about that. But I think we would have ripped the heart out of the community of Suffolk as a crown handling, a spell of county, and I'm not prepared to do that, because if once you make policing another public service too remote, where people can't identify with them, what are we trying to do? That would have been unacceptable, it was unacceptable for me as a person who has lived in Suffolk all his life so far. And you know, when I was in the minority of one bad in February, with everybody trying to pitch against me, I said, we need to talk to the public about this, we had a too much consultation period, anecdotally, the online evidence we took was 75%, keep the control on, 20% error rates, yes, you can get rid of it, 3 or 4% couldn't make my strength position to be in, because it's secondhand. But I did what I thought was definitely the right decision for Suffolk, it wasn't the difficult sin of my life, I have to say that, and it's not a comfortable position to be in the minority of one, but when you have a lot of public support, and I would like to thank all of you here who sent emails, texts and right across the place in your life, that means a huge amount, not just to me, but to the team as well, I have a hugely supportive team, they are absolutely fantastic, and I don't think it would have been possible without their support, and indeed, all of you here. So I just want to be there, off your chest, but how on earth anybody on BBC News could have come up with the strange mathematical equation that saving £632,000 and not doing that equates 250 job losses, I have absolutely no idea. All I can say is they must have been paid out of tenure or something, absolutely ridiculous. Yes, there are pressures, I'm not trying to underpay that, but I do think together we can get over that problem. So, the Chief Constable is now busily working away to make sure that no stone is left unturned for saving money within the Constabulary before we start work on other things. Some of the, I've got in the list here, of things that have got to be put right, and that is not up for negotiation. I've said we're going to have an issue for, sorry, not an issue, excuse me, Chairman, there will be a freeze on recruitment proceedings, and as you know, the overall package of remuneration for senior officers is way too high. You know, we have got to get to a stage in this country where a 60% final salary index and pension, having only worked for 30 years, has got to be cut out. It is no longer affordable, and these are things I'm not blaming people for accepting it, but as we go forward, we need government help, we need your support to deal with. At the moment, the workforce is not fit enough, you would regret the story from the media, very disappointed to see this, I have raised it personally at our accountability performance meeting six months ago, that something needs to be done, nothing has been done, so that will be sorted out, I hope, in the next six months, I have said to the Chief Constable, we need some action on this. 5.4 on the league test is pretty low, it's got to be far better than that. And the reason I say that, ladies and gentlemen, is because we have 10% of the workforce unrestricted to recuperative duties. That is completely unfair on those who are fit and work hard, it puts an extra strain on them, and it's not good enough. So that's another thing we're dealing with, we need to improve our project management, I'm a little bit fed up with some of the under-spends that happen, but this is partly because of the way the system is developed, we're not getting the right people in charge of projects and knowing what we're doing. This is something we need to do together, I might say this, for us helping each other across the whole of the public and voluntary sector in that as well. I find it very difficult to justify a mileage reimbursement of 65 pence, I was horrified when I found that out, of course, you all know, those of you who know about this, you will know that it's not the X M R C rate that gets paid for us, national insurance charge on top of it, it's a further 10.8 pence. It's not good enough, if we're really concerned about saving money, it's not our concern, it's an active leadership, kick this ridiculous system out and we'll have a system that we want inside. You yourselves at the County Council have dealt with that, we spend £190,000 a year on an essential crime scheme, most of which in my view is not essential, so that will have to be dealt with as well. We also spend on the leave, the days, the national issues in Suffolk, which are difficult, various allowances, pensions, housing allowance, rent allowance, productivity bonuses and everybody else, getting all for £20 million quid. To make the point, I'll be really short on money in policing when this really happens. I think taking a few leaves out of some of the other parts of the public sector would be extremely helpful. So that's something, again, we're looking at a lot. Other issues that have come up about data integrity, we need a better national system for this, we've got to get back to the situation where people have trust and belief in police data. I do sit on behalf of Police and Crime Commissions on the National Committee of HMRC, and I hope we will make some progress, but we're going to have to start putting heads together there, starting with proper measurement of everything we report. We need to develop methods for measuring police productivity, it's going to be tricky, but I can't think of very many other businesses that have a budget of nearly £14 million if you look at all police activity across the whole of the UK, where they're measured. Just a couple of other things to say, Chairman, before I shut up, you'll be pleased to hear. We did receive just over £700,000 through the Office of Police and Crime Commissioner for the Community Safety Functions. You will know, many of you, that we have handed £300,000 of that over to the Safer Suffolk Foundation, to Safer Suffolk Fund, they are administering it for us, it's not new money, it's part of the existing budget, and I hope that will work well because they should, will be able to match front hand with other sources of funding, and I think we're all benefit. All the chairmen of the Ursuline Community Safety Adults have actually been involved, or will be involved in the decision, they've impressed, have money down again. Another thing we're very pleased to be involved in, along with the County Council, is the Ossop Rising Project, that's an excellent example of how we can all work together for the greater good, and we need to carry on doing. I do think going forwards, we have a wonderful opportunity here in Suffolk to start to put things together in the public and the voluntary sector, I'd be very, very pleased to have discussions with all council leaders, including your own leader, Mark and Deborah. There is an opportunity here for looking at how can we share services, we've got a huge estates programme to an half thousand buildings, we should do more on procurement, there is clearly an opportunity for looking at Blue Light Services, I was delighted to have a phone call from Colin Spence in April of last year, where the idea exploded about how could we work more closely together, yes, we need some government legislation, but there's so much more we could do, and I do think picking things in Suffolk is what we're all about, and that's very, very important. We could look at a concept, a lot of public support, for example, for a new concept on a control, where in time, not immediately, I'm set that, we could put functions together, not only for Blue Light Services, but other equally as important functions that perhaps are not emergency, if you look at Police 101, you look at Custom 1st, there's all sorts of things, environmental health, other police sources are trying this, doesn't know who owns it, it's all about Suffolk in many cases, and we will continue to do that, and I hope you all will be able to join in and push everybody in a position to look at these things seriously. I do think we owe it to the public, there's quite a lot of government funding available, not only from DCLG at the Home Office, but let's not forget the Cabinet Office. The Permanent Secretary from the Home Office came to see us a few weeks ago, and he said, you know, if you've got ideas and you want to transform things in Suffolk, don't wait for government to announce them, come and see us, agitate for getting funding support, get the political barriers out of the way. Could I add one, please, ladies and gentlemen, let's look at what's best for the residents and business of Suffolk, not invested in the interests of individuals or certain services, we've got to do what is best for people in this county. If certain people are in the way, well, let's move those people out of the way, get someone else in that's going to do it, because we owe it to everyone, so I hope we will have your support, your own support for doing that. And ultimately, you know, maybe we can shape our own, this means it's a wonderful historic county, I do think it's the best, I know a bit of advice on that, but you know, we can have a wonderful opportunity to work together. The Constabulary will be up for it, because I think it's a central part of what we want to do. And I would just like to close by commenting on what the Bishop, or Acting Bishop, said, there was a lot in there regarding partnerships and working with each other. And our own County Council Leader said already of Suffolk this morning, and referred to the commitment of partnership, collaboration and everything else. Well, I'm going to shut the door with a down, I'd love to come back and talk to you again in a few months, whenever you like, for that matter, but let's make sure we make some real progress and do what's very much best for Suffolk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was how big you have it here, my Council Chairman, now Tim has agreed to answer the questions, and I'll ask the first point. Tim, you mentioned the issue of control, which is your big, big issue, hasn't it, in terms of that? Do you think in fact that there is getting a control centre for something in Suffolk between farmers, by recipe, but also in particular, for emergency, for the local city, is that a risk to us all? Because I think, I think it's better if people work together, you know, in terms of, for a while.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. Well, yes, I do, I'm not an expert, I don't quite know how it would be done, but I do think there is a wonderful opportunity, we look at a lot of the way, we have to work together, including our very important coastline, the Coast Guard, other Blue Light Services and so on, and how it all affects the wellbeing and the reputation of our county, actually. We're all under budgetary pressures, it's very easy to deal with short term solutions, but I think a lot of people are cynical about politicians because they only act from one election to another, well, can we not try and make it a bit different in Suffolk and all for the longer term? I'm not for a moment pretending it's easy, but I do think if we lose this opportunity now, it may not come back, so I'm right behind that, I'm not precious about who owns it or who does it, if it belongs to the people of Suffolk and we can do it better, then can we please get behind it and at least look at it. How can we do it? Explain to the population of Suffolk why it would be a good idea? If we can't get everybody to join in, then we must help people, why not? That is a very issue that we owe to the population of Suffolk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Passwell. My question to you is that despite all the comments in the media and the press reports about the costly, costly 250 jobs being lost by frontline policemen, policemen in Suffolk, can you assure me and the residents of Suffolk that this isn't going to happen, and that if you've got to make cuts or savings, that you pass first look at the senior level and also the senior staff, if we use, because I feel that certainly on the frontline, we need more police on the beat, not less, so it's very important that we give us a maybe assurance or give us on that.
I'll give a brief answer to the question, I haven't touched on that, and I think we need to remember that senior officers in the ACPO as associated with chief police officers, the aggregate cost of employing such individuals with pensions and everything else probably well over 250, in some cases 300,000 a year. So a couple of savings there, of course, equates to control, if we want to put it in senior officer currency units, or whatever we like to call it. And I think it's a very serious point, it's not right that the bottom of the organisation always takes the pain, that isn't good enough, so we put that in there as a phrase for the moment. As regards 250 job losses, I certainly can't guarantee there will be no job losses, what I can say is the redundancies, above and is already paying for the Enterprise and George Programme, we can keep that to an absolute minimum, we could almost go so far as to say it's a high down right here beginning, because of the 30-year retirement rule, you will find that numbers come down, we have a recruitment freeze that would nearly sell what you actually oversold in the budget gap, so I can certainly give you that assurance there, so there's no plans for A19 and all those redundancies, and I'll leave you with one point, 20 years ago, there were a thousand frontline officers in Suffolk, the funding levels were a bit higher. We now have 1,200 officers and 250 PCSOs, so can we please remember it's about police productivity and effectiveness, it mustn't be just about absolute numbers, we've got to work better, smarter, reduce demand while working together across agencies, and if I can very quickly say, now the mental health concord that we signed a week ago today, and Jaina was there as Chairman of Health and World of Ebor, that could be, if we do it properly, transformational. On occasions, 40% of the police come and spend being with people with mental health problems, not good enough, got to sort it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just thinking back when you started speaking, Tim, you know, eight months ago, at Huston's, and you see, and then I can see you here with a palpable sense of energy for your job, and I think Suffolk's obviously fortunate to have such an impressive DCC. Very pleased to hear about your commitment to localism and services here in Suffolk, can I, I want to hear just a little bit more about that commitment going forward. Also, we do have our place in Beris St Edmunds, our next meeting's in July, it would be good to have you come along in September, October, I haven't set the date, I'll be chairing that meeting, but I'm sure, I'm going north, but you know, we'd like to see you along to explain the progress to resident groups, if you could commit to that.
Am I meant to stand up? God, Chairman, I do apologise.
It's the exercise, isn't it?
We should have got quite again on the Greek test, yeah. Yes, regarding...
I want to hear just a little bit more about that commitment going forward. Also, we do have our place in Beresford Edwards, our next meeting's in July. It would be good to have you come along in September, October, I haven't set the date, I'll be chairing that meeting, but I'm sure I'm going to notice. But, you know, we'd like to see you along to explain the progress to resident groups, if you could commit to that.
Am I meant to stand up? God, Sharon. I do apologize, I do.
It's the exercise, isn't it?
We should have got quite again on the Greek test, yeah. Yes, regarding localism, I do think that's the epitome of what we do for policing. That local content has to remain, and that's one of the reasons, there is only so far we can go in Norfolk. I think we're more or less reaching the buffers. We are committed to the new collaboration we already have. We are going to do a lot more on the regional basis on series and organised crime, because these vagabonds, of course, have their respect for boundaries, but that isn't regional, it's actually national and international. And of course, with Phoenix so poor in the A14, we're generally going to need to be up there getting involved in it. But that local policing, that seems a place where people know who are their local people. That must remain, that is something I treasure about Suffolk, that our 423 villages, as well as our bigger towns. That must not and will not be eroded. So we need to find models for doing it, and one day we can help each other there. And of course, when it comes to public engagement, there is an open invitation to all of you. If you want to have more meetings or any other group you're involved in, very happy to come along and talk to you here at breakfast, lunchtime, tea time, dinner, as always, at three in the morning. But that is an offer there for all of you. We have a regular series of engagement meetings right across the county. That public engagement is actually critical to what we do, very, very important, we do that. So give the officer a ring, we'll get the stuff in, so I'll await the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What are the commissioner's views about possible transfer of enforcement for on-street car parking offences away from the police towards local authorities?
Right, well, that question about on-street car parking enforcement has come up a number of times. Car parking and speeding comes up at every public engagement meeting there is because it matters to people locally. There are two or three ways of doing it. The basic view is, yes, if local authorities want to take it on, have it by all means, no problem at all for that. If they don't want to do that, then of course, there is a function for the consomery. PCSOs, I think, have up to 20 powers bestowed on them by the chief constable. Issuing parking offensive tickets and so on is certainly one of those. I think the way to do that is, if there is a problem with that in particular, if police properly align, I will take it to the chief constable and say, well, Dubbs, you need to sort this out and build on it some enforcement system. It's particularly pertinent, of course, environmental places like collecting children dropping off at schools, outside hospital care homes, a bit more common sense. And of course, everybody says, well, I'm quite too busy, and I have to park there because I'm in a hurry. That isn't good enough, we've got to allow a bit more time. So we can certainly be there to help, but if local authorities would like to take it on, I'd be more than happy.
Thank you, Sharon. Mr. Paschke, sorry if I have to put you back, please. I really wanted to congratulate you on the honourable saying of the control centre in Suffolk. I think that is probably a big relief to most of my constituents, and I think that goes with all of us. I think the idea that we retain Suffolk's service and knowledge in Suffolk is really important. And I'm really pleased to hear that you've got some ideas on how you plan to meet your target of 1,200 officers on, you know, at the belt. Any idea when we'll start to hear about those programmes, so that people aren't second guessing what's going to happen? And have some idea of the type of things we're looking at, so that we can provide the securities that our constituents might have.
Yep, and thank you, now you asked that question, because I forgot to mention it, I was a little bit worried. Yeah, thank you very much for those very kind words, deeply appreciated, I would say, by myself, because it's all about what's best for Suffolk. Yeah, my ideas for saving money, I touched on some of those. One of the things that I found quite infuriating about this whole process, if you're going to have a major challenge in the business, it is not beyond a wisdom man to understand that you should do something like these, you know, about budgeting and progress, so we get right down into the weeds, why are you spending money where you are, how are you justified? I have resistance to that, I'm afraid of the people north of the River Weyman, and the size of they were. But we are doing that in Suffolk, even if they don't want to join in. The other thing is about the states, in that if you're making huge transformational initiatives and policies, looking at these states, having the right figure in the right place, with the right cost structure, as well as a public access review, and that's where we all need to join in together, it seems to me to be completely nonsensical that you do it in isolation. You have to do these things together. We have already signed up and agreed the funding for an ICT review, and it's not just about computers and telephones. How do we use technology as an enabler for not only improving the work rate and efficiency and effectiveness of the garden and frontline? That's really important, that would boost MRO, but how do we use technology as a driver as we go forwards? How do we link things up, not only across the public sector and the voluntary sector, doing the control room and ways we do that, or whatever we want to call it? There is huge scope there, and I find it quite strange that there's been very little attention paid by senior officers in visiting that wonderful resource we've got, Palace Street Park. There are over 30 multinational corporations based, which research into the applications of technology for making ourselves more effective. We even have problems within the consomery with internal systems talking to each other. The whole thing is bumbling, it's going to be sorted out, and we are going to sort it out, and that's one of the reasons for having the ICT review. So we put all that together, and I hope we will be able to share with the population of Suffolk the sorts of areas we're looking at within two to three months. The idea is to make sure we make up that extra, we'll have the ideas in place for bridging that extra £10 million we need to find over the next two or three years. I hope we will have the outlines of the plans available with some detail by the end of this calendar year. But there is no course of people being along at the moment. There is sufficient money indicating for this year and frankly for next year. We need to look at the target profiling, getting methods together for a long-term solution, so that we don't have this going on every year. I think the public, the second time, every year, you've got the same old fashioned about, trying to sort things out. Let's get a plan together for the next five to 10 years, and as soon as we've done that, there'll be private consultation, hopefully by the end of this year, so we can get things in place during the next time of year, so we can all agree.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I apologise, Commissioner, for talking about pennies rather than billions, you've made me 42 billions. The police rely greatly on public information, and at every parish meeting I go to, the police support officer makes an up to mention the fact that people should ring 101. Well, in one particular village, an old age pet, it did ring 101. Through May 19, they discovered it cost a £1.62 for privilege of reporting a suspicious vehicle. I took up the case and I was told that it should be a £50, but do you really think the principle of asking the public to help with police and then being charged for trying to help is a good one? I'd invite your views.
The answer to the question is that, well, I'm quite surprised, no, I mean, it's a stupid idea, doing charging for that. I mean, if you want to get people to ring and sell them, it's completely, completely not apparent nonsense. Now, I'm told there are some regulations somewhere, so that's something we are taking up as an association of police and crime commissions, and I shudder when I say things like that, because every time it gets into the mechanism of government machinery, bureaucracy, rules, regulations, EU, whatever you like to call it, there always seems to be a lorry load of rubble in the way that you have to push through. We will try and do that, and I think, well, I hope we can find a way that, if we could just do it in isolation, Suffolk, I would do it. But I'm told it's not that simple. But there is another serious point, we need to make sure that that mechanism is effective, and that is something that the Communications Department, which is a collaborative unit with Norfolk and Suffolk, not our own internal one, that needs to be sorted out. And one of the problems of collaboration is, if you have a different message in Norfolk and Suffolk, perhaps someone could explain to me how you can have two messages coming from one place. You can't be the servant of two masters, doesn't really work terribly well.
Just now, are you content with those questions? This is something I've said, that's fine, very good, that's great. I think I'll say it on the next one.
Yeah, thank you. We all realise, very often, perhaps, a fit healthy policeman, you mentioned in your little message to us all. We come to me to ask about cycling to work, you know, and how it is that some stations, and that they have it there are, have got bikes for the policemen, and they have got these special uniforms, I never see any out of them, and yet, notably, I went to my local station, and I had to go in there, just pound with the back, and there were eight police cars in there. You did mention the number of police cars. That's what I'd better if we had people out on bicycles and not wandering in motor cars.
Well, I agree with you, thank you very much, Sharon. Yeah, I agree with you. This came up a few months ago, not long after I was elected, and it took about two months for the inventory, how many bikes got to be found. And I forget the exact figure, but I was told it was about 150 in a varying state of the pack. In other words, we haven't got a clue. I think that's a pretty correct way of saying it, Sharon. Now, we do put money into cycling, it's important, and I know there are various councils that do that. Actually, you know, there's no need for there to be a cycle, the money is available for that. Sometimes things get fed into the consomery, and it takes a month and some days for them to get decided. And I've said to bloke officers and PCSO, if you've got a problem, will you please let us know direct? Don't go through the system, because we can get it sorted out rawest straight away. I'm going to lose the rest of my hair within the next six months if I hear anybody else comment about the procurement of uniform and things like that. I just can't understand the problems with this. It is a ridiculous system, it really means breaking up the system again, so exasperating. We even had some specials who were passed out, the uniform had apparently been worn months ago, and it wasn't quite ready for when they passed out, so they couldn't go and do it, it was very frustrating. But we need to have some common sense in that system, so please keep the difficulties coming in and looking for some help.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think as a former police, career police officer myself, and my experience, I congratulate the Commissioner, I'm keeping things inside. And most of my people I speak to are pleased that they control the rules, they're staying solid, and are really dreading that law that would take over the rules of Suffolk. And I think that's a really good rule, and I congratulate you on it. As far as the things is, as you say, as a former police officer, I lost my hair at a very young age. Centralisation of communications was one of the biggest modes of contention, as an oppositional bit, when you deal with incidents, like people who don't know where they're going to send it, have no local knowledge, no appreciation of the local conditions. And that was a lot of frustration and lots of confidence in frontline policemen, in the bosses handling the system that worked. And I congratulate you again on that decision, a brave decision, I think. What concerns me is sickness and the costs. I know the costs of the sickness costs with the consomery. I'm very interested to know, I remember as a young constable, if I went sick, the sergeant would come round to my house and he would check that I was actually sick. And he would have to put a report in or a slip of paper to say that he has visited my home, and I was genuinely sick. And you're not the doctor, but you did, you did my presenting, it was certainly good, but it's certainly good. One didn't really understand. I'm just waiting on the last card, Mr. Chairman.
If it's anything like this, we'll have to sit down. What's your question? The cost of sickness, please. Thank you. How's the second one, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well, thank you for those very kind words, well, that was greatly appreciated. The cost of sickness is far beyond, the sickness update, I see, I mentioned earlier, 10% of the 1,200 officers are on the sick or recuperative duty. That's what they've got to get fixed, it's unacceptable where we are, we're one of the worst performing consomers in the country. So we're definitely on the case, I can assure you of that. And actually, the chief constable will be in the week test, so I'd like to do it for my brother referee, and see if he can join in, if he likes. There's a low price standard of 5.4, I'm sure. But now, I make this serious point, we've got to get that sorted out now. There has been a tendency in the last three or four years, I'm told, that people miraculously go off sick during the store holidays. We're on the case for that, not good enough. I like your idea about going around and just checking, maybe if you can dip something, I think is the technical word. Are people really sick or whatever is going on? So that is definitely an operational issue, I am going to hand that to the chief constable. But what we do, the Police and Crime Panel will no doubt be very interested in that, and I can see them taking that already. We need to explain why it's at a level this, and what is being done about it. It is tricky operation, but I would hope the chief constable will have very, very vigorously on that. And I would expect to see an action plan on behalf of the residents of Suffolk, what is going to do with it, and sort it out as a matter of great urgency.
Sharon, I don't feel too good today, but the fortune of you coming round to my house was quite enough to get me here. Sorry, I can't decide whether to say to Sharon, like you want to hear, or Mr. Hammond. But I need to approach my good friends on my side of me, because we have police officers in Suffolk, not policemen, please. Yes, I'm just checking, okay. I do have a question, which I think is extremely valuable. And members will recall that Sharon, police authorities over the last 25 years have come two or three times a year to this council with a written report and answered questions. Actually, I just think listening to you today and the questions reminds us all how important that was. So the question to the Commissioner is, please, will you not only come back on a regular basis, but could we have a written report? So that then we get some of the information and data out of the way, and then we can concentrate on asking you questions on the report. Would be very good. And I do want to say to all colleagues, and it's just slightly come through, I want to have a question. The Commissioner's absolutely right, an effective and efficient police force is not all about the numbers of police officers or indeed PCSOs. It's about the total range of skills that are employed, but most importantly of all, as has been said, is how you equip those officers and the workforce, and particularly around IT, vehicles, buildings, whatever they need. So please don't get ourselves into this power of numbers game, it's very, very unhelpful and not to take this in forward. So my question, will you come back, Mr. Chairman, probably quite simply, I'll tell you.
No, I'll definitely come back, you can ask me whenever you like. We were hoping to have this earlier, but for various reasons, it did just delay, which is quite unacceptable. There will, as part of the legislation, there has to be an annual report that is issued after each full year of the Police and Crime Panel. I think that's due to be out by the end of July, so the first year finished in April. And that will give a lot of figures of analysis of what's happened, crime figures, initiatives, investment, all sorts of things like that. So definitely there, but I'm quite happy to come back and discuss a bit of the Chair, if you want me to come once a quarter. More than happy to do it, that's not a problem, very happy to do it.
Thank you. I'll be at the streamer next, and then I will be on the line. How's it, Sharon? Yeah, thank you, Sharon. First I'll say is, I'm delighted to see one of my constituents at any of the meetings in Suffolk County. Also, I want to impart to you, one of my other constituents is Head of Pevershire Police, who actually sees, and I agree with him, I don't agree with many of the comments about the control needing to specifically stay in Suffolk. If you speak to anyone that's been involved in the control room, emergency control room outside the county, actually, with modern technology, and it's been around for quite some time, the issue of where that call is coming from and where you need to deploy the resource to, is actually pretty much something that, quite the technology we have with mobile phones and with SD cards. That issue often doesn't arise. What does arise from an emergency situation is the quality of the staff taking that call from someone that's normally under extreme stress. So actually, I don't have a huge problem, and many of the residents of Suffolk don't have a huge problem where it is. What we can make sure is the quality of the people delivering that service is sufficient. I also quite like the idea of perhaps us sharing some resources, etc. But just one little word of caution, if you were to go into a service, perhaps with us, a control centre, perhaps in this building, you need to be a little bit careful of Suffolk County Council, because it might go the way of residential care homes and the road service, I mean, they divested it.
I don't know if you're going to divest anything, actually, you know that, okay. We had a sensible debate about this, yes, I hear what you say about technology, but the problem is this, if the wrong information's put in on one occasion, and then something goes seriously wrong, you've had it. And I don't agree, the majority of people in Suffolk are ambivalent, that isn't the case. Well, certainly not the people that are sick anyway. And the only thing you've got to remember is, we don't have terribly good mobile phone coverage throughout the whole county. And if you've got to go bombing off down the road for the phone call, and the triangulation doesn't quite work, it's not quite. doesn't quite work, it's not quite the same. So I think you've got to be a little bit careful about that. Yes, people can say all local knowledge and perhaps isn't the same as it was a while ago. I accept that, but nevertheless, being able to put things together, it's not just about that, it's about how effective and efficient. And you know, if you start taking things out at the night of Suffolk like that, you're going to do an awful lot of damage to morale. I have had loads of police officers on the frontline, policemen and police within, who actually say that was definitely the right decision to make. Now, you can't say never, ever. Who knows, maybe in 10, 15 years' time, but certainly not at the moment. You know, we haven't even got the raw data across the whole county yet, have we? Look at the way that's going to transform everything we're doing. So let's get the right bricks, the foundations in place first. And we need that local agenda, which I'm particularly keen on. And as I say, collaborate, cooperate where we need to originally nationally. We keep that heart of Suffolk where it is and I'm sure we'll do a lot better together.
Uh, thanks for the counter question, Mr. Chairman. Yes, good. Thank you, Chairman. Very brief. Two points, communications, absolutely certain, I think in my bank, that's your intention. Having the file of grants control, the search, like, I think the Chief Constable would agree with it perhaps, that we do have a problem with the agencies working together, having problems with communications. That's a very significant issue to work on perhaps. But you talk about shared, um, shared activity, the joint custody facility in Galston. Really, at what point will that be reviewed as to its effectiveness in terms of the cost and also the time taken by officers moving from Wavely up to Galston and back again? And the Commissioner did say that the problems are more for Wavely, but I will say that that's a fair assumption.
Yeah, that's a very interesting point because I, um, don't, obviously, consider that the custody suites, um, at Galston and Ipswich and various events were taken before I had any to do it. But I think there might be lessons that we need to look at. One of the things the constabulary is not very good at is looking at the added on cost when it comes to extra travelling. Um, for example, look at the collaboration things, we're having evaluations of how they are, how genuinely effective they are. Um, look at the extra time that is spent travelling from wherever it is up to Norfolk or the other way around to collaborated units. That is a cost, that's a cost of the taxpayer, time, resources and everything else. And I've yet to get a sensible answer as to how that is budgeted for. Now, I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I would like to see the evidence to justify it. You've certainly got a good point there. One of the other factors that came into the consideration from the financial office about the combined control, there is no way I'm going to sanction on behalf of Suffolk taxpayer putting one penny into supporting Norfolk's PFI for their cost structure of their headquarters. That is costing them an absolute fortune up there and I don't think that is a sensible use of taxpayers' money. That was not a major reason, but it was a contributory factor. So I think I hinted at this earlier, when we look at some of these major changes, we've got to look at the overall impact, including the travelling time, um, costs, how does it fit in with the way we operate logistically, et cetera? The travelling time taking people to custody, if they're from Hayver Hill up to Bury, you take two police officers, I suspect that might take probably a three hour round trip by the time they're in there and get back or something like that. Um, well, that's what I'm told by somebody, I don't know. Well, we obviously know what the answers are, but that's not what I've been told. Um, so we've got to be very careful to evaluate it in detail and look at what else the alternative could be. The custody suites are there, we do internationalise this data, you've got larger areas of police station that are not actually occupied, and that we will do. And there's no doubt actually that the, I will speak up with the custody suites, they are state of the art facilities and we do not have the problems that other forces have with prisoners dying, getting held in custody. And that can cost a fortune and, you know, people are innocent until proven guilty. So that is not criticism, that would be criticism of the concept of the custody suites, it's just an overall examination, projects and logistics and things like that. Thank you.
And my question, Counselor Haggins, your turn now.
Thanks, Chairman. Tim, as you know, I've been serving with the audience, please, if I can, I'll be very frank and very forthright in your answers and questions. Um, but there is one thing that I find a little bit interesting. I mean, when you, um, when you made the announcement about the Control Room, you asked the question, um, do you have a Plan B? You said, no, I don't have a Plan B. It was one of your real best. Um, you consulted widely on whether or not you should close the Control Room. You didn't actually consult on, uh, on any alternatives. And people have been prepared, and I'm a bit worried because, um, although you talk about budget services, are we going to be fixed with, are you going to, are you going to be fixed with, are we to raise the precept next time to cover the costs? And just one other thing I meant, an alternative question. Um, you didn't mention online crime. I wonder what resources you have available to deal with that.
Yeah, fine, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again for those kind words. Yeah, the other point of the Control Room, you've got to understand, that wasn't my idea, that came from the two Chief Constables, okay? They were the ones who put the finance in under delegated authority to do all the plans. I didn't agree with them and said we need to develop alternatives. That's what we are doing. Um, I did say earlier, there is actually a, there's a window actually nearly two years before we need to have them quickly placed. We are looking at the state's rationalisation, I talked about the state, the neighbourhood teams working collectively across Suffolk, I talked about mental health, I talked about how we need to work with the rest of the health business, local authorities, transforming rehabilitation, Victims' Commission, all of these things are in the pipeline, so there's actually an awful lot going on. The specifics of Plan B, we need to look at the options. Since April the first, under Transfer Stage Two, which I think we were one of the panel meetings where we talked about that, the dynamics have changed, it is no longer up to the Chief Constable to come up with all the ideas, of course, we need his ideas as well, but we now do these things together. That didn't happen before, that's why it came up like that. So Plan B, we are looking at every single thing we can do internally to save money, as I explained earlier, and these external partnerships, collaborations, attractive government funding, further investment, how we work together to reduce demand. Economic development is actually very important because we know economic deprivation leads to much greater, um, disunity in communities, crime, be it serious sexual offences, domestic abuse, alcohol, drug addiction, these things all go hand in hand. We're putting an awful lot in to try and reduce that and we're having some success with that, activities for young people. So it's a very, very wide ranging issue. I mentioned we're doing zero based budgeting, the state should do ICT, public access review and community safety. That can't be done in five minutes, that is very much a fundamental part of Plan B. And as I said earlier, by the end of this year, I hope we will be able to explain to people, these are the main areas we look at, we'll then narrow it down, ready to put in action, um, what we're doing in just over a year's time. But believe me, I know the Police and Crime Panel are far into that as well. But there is no need to panic in the short term. And the precept, I always said, um, well, I said at the beginning, until I'm quite convinced that we're as efficient as we should be within the constabulary internally, we need to get senior officers out of functions such as communications and H O, which they know we're a little about, senior officers should be out doing policing. That has got to be done yet. I mentioned several other things we're looking at. And I've always said that, um, we will take one year at a time for the precept. I would like to be able to keep precept levels down because I think we're already pretty overtaxing this country anyway, some of you may not agree with that. But if we do put the precept up, it will be for a specific deal for the taxpayer. In return for that extra money, you will get X, Y and Z. What we don't want to do is to put taxes up just to preserve the status quo, there is too much going on that needs to be put right before we start putting taxes up. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Right, well, can I, um, on your behalf, thank you. The first was presidential. Secondly, answering questions, which are important. Uh, in video, maybe you should use this for the training video for the Police and Crime Panel of Pet. Tim, thank you so much.
That's what I said. Thank you very much.
She was all over the place. Yeah, waffly.
Right, another one to the panel, I should now attend, what is the cabinet member's reports and questions? I have now received four questions. The first question is, well, I've had a Julian, does it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What area of ground is the Suffolk County Council holding there?
Um, thank you, Counselor, for your question. There are 10.805 hectares of brownfield land of the county council, and it is now dispersed over seven sites. I believe this pie is stretching, if you're in terms of being available to anybody else in the country.
Just one question, please. Uh, thank you, Counselor. And so Haybury Housing Partnership has a very constricted target on building four or housing, so constrained that they recently proposed pulling down garages and building on parking spaces in my estates, which are very crowded. We're talking of 27 dwellings on eight tenths of America, at great cost in quality of life to my residents. It's a measure of Haybury's desperation to find a formidable land on which to build a formidable housing. Our brownfield sites are a resource which should be spent on helping Haybury do that. Will Counselor Haggins or me to discuss the release of some land to Haybury?
Counselor Haggins, have you got some questions?
Yes. Um, I'm not sure the detailed planning matters are mandatory for this council. And, I mean, I don't have a lot of information at the moment on what sort of land might be available. Of course, I'd be happy to meet you, um, to discuss the use of land in Haybury. Um, in principle, I intend to look at each site on its own merits and we want to ensure that social and economic value is unlocked and that is, um, that is shared fairly and appropriately between local residents, but also the residents of Suffolk as a whole on the hard course of these assets that are held by the council.
If you can make expressions for Mark Rera to a counsel, ask for any, ask for counsel, Mark Rera, please.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've had a bit of dialogue with, with Grandpa from today's round, so just to read out my question. Resident complaints are coming thick and fast about forced state pavements and dirty road signs, and of course, potholes and shabby lines on many roads make it dangerous for all road users, pedestrians and cyclists. Has the council got a grip on timely, routine maintenance, E T repair and pavements, cleaning road signs and making our roads safe in our towns and villages?
Counselor Haggins.
Thanks, Counselor Haggins. Well, the county council's got clear policies and standards for load and maintenance maintenance. These are set out in the Highway's Maintenance Operational Plan, which is available on the county council's website. This document reflects the council's statutory duties and the National Code of Practice of our management. As colleagues are aware, the extremely wet weather has taken a severe toll on the condition of our roads. We are working closely with that and trying to eliminate the backlog and repairs. I'm very pleased to report to Counselor that at the height of the winter, we had over a thousand items outstanding, um, as of a few days ago, it was down to 200, as well as funding of the city with a programme of operating maintenance works. We are making investments into that. Um, and we're working to ensure that the standards set out in the Highway's, uh, operating plan are achieved. Very pleased to announce some of the surface dressing programmes are going to get underway next week and this is designed to get our roads to the best shape possible with standing and expected positions.
Counselor Haggins, I'm sure, keep that confidence, please. What is your answer to the other question, supplement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me a supplementary. Um, I, I believe what gets, uh, gets managed gets managed and one of the suggestions I came up to a couple of them was to have an annual sort of action plan in each county division, agreed with residents and borough councils, town councils, just a plan of all the work that needs to be done routinely, the pavements and signs, and that that could be then measured on a six month basis. Do you not think that might be the way to proceed in each division?
Counselor Haggins, what's your response to that?
Well, yes, um, thanks for the summary question. I think the issue here is that most of the work we do on a routine basis is covered by the Highway's Maintenance Operational Plan. And in particular, the question that you asked around, around cleaning the signs, I do clean signs annually and if they require additional cleaning, we will afford to arrange that. And I do know that the planning of the West area, Highway Office is aware of that and doing it. In addition to that, I'm aware of the fact that we are starting pavement works in the town, uh, including in Rainham Road, Fordham Road, Springhill Road, Navetown, and the Spring Lane area, which have all been reds by view in the recent past. So what I think I'm saying is that that's a priority work that is prioritised, has a few prioritises with other councils.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Haggins, please.
Chairman, before I ask a question out of interest, I don't relate to the question I have, I'm a member of the Suffolk Institute of Archaeology in this district. My question is, what is the current thinking about the future of Suffolk County Council's archaeology contracting team?
Counselor Haggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselor, for your question. The future of Suffolk County Council's archaeology contracting team, please consider the next cabinet meeting for the council on Saturday, June. The cabinet report will be available on the council's website as of Monday, Saturday, June.
Counselor Smith, Chief Constable. Sir, thank you, yes. I understood the constitution, the council making it more important to have a ranking of the cabinet, and therefore if I ask a question here, I should have a reply. Um, I accept the cabinet paper that was published on Monday, just less than three days ago, so I suppose I can wait for that, but I'm disappointed you've taken that on your arm. I have here a paper which was to go on this very subject to the cabinet on the 29th of April, before it was cancelled. Uh, various decisions were being made about the future of the archaeology contracting service, uh, despite very considerable officer opposition. I'm concerned that that may have changed since then. You're obviously not going to give me any assurance now, so I should have it until Monday, but I hope the delay that we've had of six weeks won't, uh, uh, and won't lead to further delay in taking importance here, but I hope the change can be finished by the end of this cabinet session. I hope that is the case. Could the cabinet member firm that, please?
Thank you, our vote, my, um, my previous master, yes, there will be a thoughtful contact.
Okay, uh, final question, this is from Counselor Haggins, what is your answer to your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, does the highway project include the project for replacement of street trees, um, where it has either come to the end of their lives or have been taken down by a storm?
Chairman, and thank you, Counselor, for your question. Uh, there's no identity by the replacement of highway trees that die or damaged. In such circumstances, discretion is used to consider that it's appropriate to replace such trees, having there any replacements, complete from the highway maintenance budget or from district or borough council immunity budgets. Potential having highway maintenance budgets would have to be considered against what the moment has, uh, many competing demands.
Counselor Haggins, your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, given that our street trees help us with cleaning of the environment and that many new improvements, better coordination includes street trees, should there not be a proper project to promote the placement of them?
I think probably this way of dealing with this, Chairman, is if we must, I can't suppose, who to present a specific list of the problems that she has, we consider those without a purpose, you'll be able to take them through the budget side just described.
Right, thank you, Mr. Haggins. Right, another one to the panel, thanks on today, and the next, Chairman, the year 2014, 15. It's not my duty to ask nominations to elect to the office, I'm chairman of Suffolk County Council for 2014, 15, to have nominations.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's a great pleasure that I would like to propose Counselor Christopher Hudson to be chairman of the county council for the time of year. Like you said, Mr. Chairman, he was elected at my election, uh, not by many years ago, I think he replaced Counselor John Ashgate, who may just remember very fondly. who may just remember very fondly. In a very short time, Christopher Hudson has made his presence known in the county council and has called it as of the last year served very well as the vice-chairman to yourself. And I have no hesitation in recommending him very highly. I would ask for a second to back my nomination.
Thank you, councillor. Do you have a second nomination, please? Steve Morris, has spoken, has seen.
Thank you, Chairman. It's very great having to second the nomination of councillor Christopher Hudson as chairman of this authority. He's a very active member of Suffolk Coastal District, councillor. He's one of the two patters that we have in the main chamber. And I think with his eloquence, his wisdom and his charm, and his drive, he will both be very good ambassadors to this county for the coming year.
Nominations, councillor Hudson. Have any other nominations of councillor, councillor Paul? I'm sorry, just a quick one. In that case, then can I perhaps show hands and ask him to accept the nomination for the chair of Suffolk County Council? Or the chair? What are you against? It's my privilege to announce that councillor Hudson has been duly prosenched and elected as chairman of this county council for the coming year.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor, for that. It's with great pleasure that I'm able to make this presentation. The guy, of his past chairman's badge, and I very much hope, know that he will wear that with pride and love. Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Just now I'm reading the declaration of acceptance of office. I, Christopher Gerard Hudson, have been elected to the office of chairman of the council. Hereby declare that I take an office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the councillor's code of conduct in the performance of my functions in that office. Well, it gives me a great pleasure. I'd like to thank very much the kind words of councillor Viva Mina. I'd also like to thank Stephen Morris, my county councillor, having been nominated for second in me. It's a very great honour to take the position on. Some say it's a lonely job, others say it's a friendly job. I hope it can be sometimes both. I wanted very much to be able to inform colleagues that my chosen charity for the following year, for next year indeed, is Suffolk. As we enter this time of commemoration of World War One and indeed, above all, a few events for our nation, it would be a great pleasure for me to be a servant, to try to raise funds for Suffolk, particularly bearing in mind the fact that so many of our soldiers, sailors, air force men and women have given their lives. But we often sometimes need to remember the needs of the families who have left, have been left behind in this country. And if they've lost or their loved ones have died, then of course, we can think about them and do our best. It's a charity that's been raised several times before in the county. I know that colleagues will be very willing to support me in my endeavors to raise funds for that. And I trust that it will be a popular decision with our rate payers and people in our fine county. So I'm very honoured to inform you this afternoon that Suffolk is my chosen charity. I've already had several people who are quite unknown and are back in the council, who you know as a manager. Very, very briefly before I move on to that, I wanted to say, not a panagere on behalf of councillor Madrigal, but I wanted to say a few words about the fine work that he's done, not only as chairman, but for the many years' service he's given both to this county and elsewhere. He has performed sterling work in many, many functions, not least in highways. And you heard him say, and we had a little film show earlier, which gave us a claim of pitfalls and marvelous things that were able to be achieved by the county and things in which he had no small part to play. I particularly wanted to commend him to you for the, perhaps the best work on can do as the elected member of the county, that is to serve and assist once residents in the divisions. And indeed, Hudson and the nation of councillor Mabre are well together. So Guy, I commend the sterling work that he's done on behalf of your constituents and Hudson to your colleagues this afternoon. When one is facing decisions, you need friends. Someone mentioned to me that today, you need a friend. Please be reminded me, you need friends. That's very true. If you're going over the top, you don't leave the guys behind you. You need them alongside you. And I do think that I shall do my best to be your servant and to represent this county to the best of my abilities. Thank you very much indeed. I'd like to invite any of the colleagues who would like to say a few words indeed about the retiring chairman, councillor Mabre. Invite comments if anyone has anything to say. Any comments? Yes, it's a fact there, thank you.
Just a quick one, Mr Chairman. I always try and mention Felix out if it's given opportunity. And councillor Mabre always mentions High Suffolk. And I care about Felix, and I know he cares about High Suffolk so well. It's a good tradition, and I think we should all take a lesson from that one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mabre. The leader, councillor.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I was going to actually say my words of tribute in my speech, but I'll use that opportunity to go out and say very briefly a few very fine words that you said about councillor Mabre and the work that he has done, not just as our chairman as of the last year, but in the fine years of service that he has done. Service to not just this council, but to this county. And I congratulate him also on the money raised from the town assholes, his chosen charity. I know he's taken a great personal hand in raising this money over the course of the last year, including, ladies and gentlemen, a spell in prison, which of course he was sponsored for. It's in shock to a lot of people. Thank him that the police and prime commissioner has gone at this point. The images of him in his kilt, branching a sword as part of his fundraising activities will live long in the memory of Suffolk County Council. And I thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, he has been a fine chairman of this council. He has helped the honour of this council and respect of this council. And I am thanking for all he has done on behalf. And of course, it's good that you might when they're represented up in the many functions around this county.
Any further comments? I now need to invite nominations to the office of vice-chairman of the county council for the municipal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifty. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, chairman. And first of all, may I be the fortunate one to be first to congratulate you on your election. I was indeed planning to say a word or two about councillor Mabre, and involved footed me and properly out of step. I wanted to thank him. When I was elected twenty-five years ago this month, Guy was chairman of the highways committee. And frankly, I thought he was God then. I might have adjusted that. But he was a role model for his council in quite the same age, I think, with him to aspire to. And thank you, Guy, and for all the hard work over the years. Chairman, we call for nominations to the vice-chairman. And colleagues, I'm very pleased today to be proposing councillor Jane Story to you as vice-chairman for the forthcoming year. There's a well-known expression about... There's a well-known expression, chairman, which several people in here might have noticed, but your hands are, can say they're born and bred in Suffolk. And Fred Adams is born and bred in Norfolk, so... Now, I know Arida was born and bred in Suffolk. We do get reminded from time to time. It's no wrong with the leaders, now, iron-aged man, isn't it? After Guy's reputation, iron-aged man of Fettles. Now, I know that Jane was born and bred in Suffolk. Now, how do I know she was born in Suffolk? Because she was actually born in my house. And in case I had to take her mother upstairs a few years ago just to check out the exact bedroom where Jane was born. So I can assure you today that she is born and bred and has always lived in Suffolk. And is truly a good Suffolk girl. A momentous event that was. Jane's election to this council in January two thousand and two was actually in very sad circumstances because it followed a very tragic and sudden death of her husband Chris, who represented the boroughs before her. And we all first met Jane then, thought she had amazing courage in coming standing for the county like that, as well as fighting. It was a very, very tough fight election, a regular one at that point. Your majority was? Twelve, yeah. However, Jane has never since served this council with considerable distinction. Eight years in the cabinet, I think six years as deputy leader of the council, including, if I may say, through some very difficult times when she was also acting leader of the council. I'm very confident in recommending her to you all, colleagues, that she will support Christopher Hudson very well in every possible way of the forthcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Spicer. It gives me great pleasure to be able to second that nomination. I'm most happy to do so. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the post of vice-chairman?
Point of information?
Certainly, councillor.
Yeah, I've been on this authority five years. Is it obligatory that the chairman of the authority is only a partisan conservative?
Yes.
Just need to clarify that.
Thank you for that piece of information.
It wasn't too much of a challenge. No? I don't think it was offered to anybody else, no?
May I ask again, are there any other nominations for the vice-chairman? Thank you. There have been no other nominations. I'm very pleased to announce that councillor Jane Story is duly elected vice-chairman of the county council for the municipal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Thank you.
My declaration of acceptance of office. I, Jane Story, having been elected to the office of vice-chairman of the council, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the council's code of conduct in the performance of my functions in that office. Thank you.
Many congratulations, Jane. And thank you so much for the support. I'm looking forward to being able to share with the congratulations. Thank you. At that juncture, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to, now that we have fifteen minutes to judge. Thank you so much. How are you, Paul?
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. May I congratulate you on your elevation to the chair? And we look forward to many meetings ahead, and many things and many opportunities I know you will have in the way that you will represent this fine county. Now, members would be, I'm sure, reassured that at half past four, gone on Friday afternoon, I will not be taking up full twenty minutes allotted to make this day. So I will intend to be brief. But I wanted to congratulate the chairman and I want to congratulate Jane in her new role. Jane has been a stalwart of this county council for many years. She's been support to me when I first became leader. And she was my deputy, something I appreciated greatly as I started the job. And she has now finally well-enserved honoured place in the county council. Thank you, Jane, for taking me on and good luck to you for the coming year. Mr Chairman, I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the members across the chamber this afternoon for their contributions over the last year from all sides. I'm a great believer in democracy and the democratic process. The work of members of all parties in this chamber in meeting rooms and out and across Suffolk has been committed, robust, conscientious and fair. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you. Again, we're all brick backs and we do bouquets. And I think there needs to be an opportunity to be celebrating good work on its own. I'd like to know if I may, in looking back at the last year, look at some challenges that we've done and also some solid achievements as well. While I'm on my feet, I'll mention broadband, thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three premises already now connected, three hundred and eight miles of fibre cable laid, and yet more funding secured to extend the secure and scheme even further in the future. Raising the bar with our last exam results at eleven sixteen showing improved against the national trend. The start of a very long journey that will, as the chairman, bear much through. Low stop rising, which we heard earlier today from Tim Parsons, where we've started a project alongside our partners, which will completely change the way public services are delivered locally. Similar projects are taking place elsewhere with the New Market Vision, One Haverhill and the Milne Mall Hub, to name but three. The Greater Ipswich City Deal involved an increased investment of at least ten million pounds in local skills, supporting three thousand five hundred young people into work in the Greater Ipswich area and enabling the creation of three thousand additional high-value jobs and four hundred new businesses across Norfolk and Suffolk. Great opportunity there. And yet all schools benefiting from the move to two-tiered. Those results I referred to earlier are better in our new two-tiered areas than in the, was the case generally in the council before. And my congratulations for those school leaders and young people involved in achieving those excellent goals. And one point five billion investment in apprenticeships. We are already helping apprenticeships to thrive in Suffolk, making a huge impact on the productivity of businesses and the important skills of young people. Our one point five billion pound investment will make it easier than ever before for local companies to take on and train new apprentices. And, Mr. Chairman, security funding for the A fourteen improvement. And yes, Mr. Chairman, no toll rule. Investment in care homes, working well with Care UK in the first year of that contract, bringing eighteen million pounds of investment to Suffolk Care Homes, with the first of the new state-of-the-art care opening in Ipswich and in Milne Mall in the next two months. Mr. Chairman, another year with no increasing council tax. That's no increase for the last four years in a row, a real terms cut in council tax of over six percent. And we have three more years of no increase still to come. I could go on. One thing that many of these achievements have in common is our ability to work effectively with our partners across the county and beyond. I specifically set out to build bridges, to build relationships across Suffolk and beyond. Suffolk County Council is an organisation that others can do business with and with whom we can achieve results together. And I intend to build on that in the months and years to come. Because, Mr. Chairman, I'd much rather look ahead at what we're still to do. Proud of our achievements, yes, but much more importantly, ambitious for the future and very ambitious for Suffolk. Mr. Chairman, the next three years will see some major changes. While our budget may be significantly reduced, we certainly have no intention of simply sitting here talking while services are crudely bared back. On the contrary, as a group, as conservatives, we always believe there is a way, a way of protecting the frontline services that the people of Suffolk value the most. And to do so, we are going to do that to oversee the most radical redesign this council has ever seen. It's going to be a leaner, more focused organisation that through strong financial management, innovation, local leadership and market development will provide for enablement provision of good quality services for the people of Suffolk and all with a heavy, heavy dose of practicality, focusing on what works and working with communities. We want to create a council that is more responsive, adaptive and continually developing services in a creative way, listening to communities and in tune with people's aspirations, with Suffolk's aspirations. And in carrying out this radical overhaul, we will see the council focused on our five key priorities. Our priorities for the next three years, and these are these. First, and most importantly, raising educational attainment and skill development. Secondly, supporting the local enterprise partnerships left to increase economic growth, so important for the Suffolk economy. Maintaining our roads and developing Suffolk's infrastructure. And support those who are most vulnerable in our communities as our fourth aspiration. And finally, to empower local community. And running through all of this, the health and wellbeing agenda, which is a vital part of all that we do. And we must ensure that that is central and a golden thread that runs through our organisation and our service leadership. But living within our means can be tough. It means thinking strategically, it means planning carefully, it means making difficult decisions. And as a conservative administration, we are clear on this and ready for the job we face. I also, Mr. Chairman, have great faith in our council officers to take the political vision, these priorities and deliver the council that meets our aspirations. And I would like to pay tribute to our staff today, to those represented here today and the staff that they represent throughout the organisation. The work and commitment that they show and demonstrate in making the savings that we have over the last few years has been hugely impressive. And I know your dedication will continue in the years to come. Please let's share our experience. So, Mr. Chairman, when we raise a sharp focus on our conservative priorities, we can secure the savings we need, we can secure the changes that are required and we can secure the future for Suffolk. Mr. Chairman, I said that these priorities are in no particular order, but perhaps they are. And the most important one is education. We've had a lot over the last year about education. We've had many challenges about education. But raising attainment, raising skill development has got to be our number one priority. We recognise what a long-term goal this is, dealing with issues dating back perhaps over twenty years. We also operate in a complex and constantly changing educational environment. But slowly, we are starting to see early signs of our work bearing fruit. In the cabinet changes I have made over the last month, I wanted to make a clear statement about education and to give it the pure focus it needs and deserves. And that is why I've asked Lisa Chang to focus on education skills. In doing so, I'd like to welcome Gordon Jones to the cabinet with responsibility for young people's services, including the vitally important children's service. Gordon has served as Lisa's deputy over the last year with great distinction and is a welcome addition to the cabinet. And, Mr. Chairman, talking of welcome additions to the cabinet, our team has now been augmented by Jenny Anfield, whose impressive experience in the city of London will prove a real asset as we home in on savings and contributions on your election.
On the second of May last year, seventy-nine thousand Suffolk residents voted Conservative. Fifty-four thousand voted Labour, forty thousand voted UKIP and twenty-two thousand voted DAD. That may not look like an overwhelming endorsement for one political party, but it was enough to elect more councillors for the Conservative Party than for all of the other parties together. My guess is there is only one of the Conservative councillors in this room who might have been elected anyway if she had stood at an independent last May. When people voted, they voted on the policies and values of the Conservative Party. We believe that we can demonstrate those policies and values to be welcomed. We believe that Labour's policies and values are more helpful for the people of Suffolk and would enable us to deliver better services that would improve their lives. We've made Suffolk a fairer, greener, healthier and ultimately a more prosperous place. It is our job to demonstrate to the people of Suffolk that the Labour group are united behind a Labour programme that they will want to vote for. Over the course of the past month, I have been approached by various councillors from various parties, including the Conservative Party, who have asked whether the Labour Party, or the Labour group, will join in a bid to ask the present administration. Clearly, the answer was no. We will bid to ask the present administration in 2017, when it is the voters of Suffolk who will decide who they want to run their county. But in the meantime, as the majority party, the Conservatives need to sort out their own squad. Would we be willing to run the county now? Yes, emphatically, yes, if we were able to put together an administration of councillors who had some commonality and purpose, who were willing to work together for a shared vision of a better Suffolk. Can I imagine sharing such a vision with councillor Mountford? Or any of the UKIP councillors? Or any of the disaffected Conservative councillors? No, I could not. The Labour group has a message for the county council and for the voters of Suffolk. We will not engage in shady backroom deals or party political game-playing. As I said last year, where we think the administration has got something right, we will support them. And where we think they got it wrong, we will oppose them. That is what we have been elected to do. The Labour group remains deeply unhappy at the cuts being made to county council services that people in our county are facing, and we would dearly love to seek a change in direction. We are facing a very difficult time with the council needing to find over a hundred and fifty-six million pounds' worth of cuts. But if the Conservative county councillors are finding that tough going, they have only themselves to blame. It is their party in government which is driving through the cuts. They voted for the punitive cuts at county level and they voted against the Labour group's sensible and well-thought-out budget amendments that would help protect any life of the people. The Labour group has been working hard to highlight where this administration is going wrong. Labour's constructive motions to improve Suffolk's services over the past year include calls to whose control improvement service, education welfare service, education for children with autism and ADHD, end zero hours regime for care workers and a successful motion to carry out a full feasibility study for the third big crossing in Lowes. I am very proud of the hard work that Labour county councils have achieved to scrutinise the county's problems in education, health, public protection, transport and many other areas. Over the course of the coming year, we will make as clear as we can where we believe you need to change and be as explicit as we can about what changes we would want you to make. And if councillors from other parties now share our concerns, let them vote with us the next time we look forward to constructive proposals.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Could I invite councillor Mountford now for his contribution?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to give you a chance, of course. And also, I'd be glad, councillor Lee, may also congratulate you on the items that you listed that have been achieved in recent times. The provision of broadband, as far as it's got. And also the low stop rising, the various... I'd like to congratulate you on those. Going back to our previous chairman and the little display that he gave, and he went to great lengths about the... Took about forty years for the Montford Lock, I think that was reconstructed. And I must congratulate him on that, it's certainly as well, because there's been very little progress in the intervening four years, forty years, since then. You did cause my heart to beat, councillor Lee, when you referred to building bridges, I thought, yes! But it wasn't the same thing, it wasn't the same thing. I was a little bit disappointed, actually, when you read out your list of the five priorities that this council will have. Education, growth for the elderly, roads, vulnerable people and empowering local communities. Because I have here virtually the same list from five years ago. Economic growth, education, caring for vulnerable people. Very little has changed, very little progress has been made. Certainly in regards to the jobs, there's a talk through the... What's it called? You have your local enterprise partnership of ninety-five thousand jobs through Norfolk and Suffolk. I do hope some of those will be forthcoming, especially because we need, what is it? One hundred and seventeen thousand new homes by twenty twenty-six. Because some of these people will require jobs. I've said many times that we don't need more affordable housing in Suffolk. We need more people who can afford houses. And that means jobs. So there's still a lot to be done. And one of the things... Yes, the list is about the same. And I've heard many times over the last week that they don't listen or they do listen, but they don't do it. Please don't let this... If you want to keep hearing that, it can only go on for so long. What you said at the end encouraged me about now is the time to get on with the work, to roll our sleeves up. We really do, and we as a group are sure will be very prepared to work with you or all parties. I was a little bit disappointed there, I was identified as someone that cannot be worked with by a council party. There was a certain amount of reciprocity there. However, I am prepared, and we as a group are prepared, to work with councillors of all parties. And there are even some within the Labour group who I work with very well, but I will say that. And some better know us as the Conservative group. But we think it's time to put aside party political differences and get on with this as a council as much as possible. So thank you very much, Mr.... Thank you all.
Thank you very much, councillor Mountford. May I turn now to councillor Woodster for his contribution?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your contribution to the chair. And I hope to learn over the course of your year and you'll talk of the day you celebrated your first year as one of the county of ours. In responding to the lead statement, I wish to focus on a few areas that put the headlines in numerous times during the course of this last year. These being education and local transport. I've listened to what the leader has stated today regarding education and welcome your thoughts. But the headlines we've received there, Austin, where the severely criticised Suffolk county council on its failure to improve attainment and the great number of our students has not been great. In fact, just to remind you all, only this reason is March, Austin told us that the council's support for school improvement is ineffective and the life chances of our young people in Suffolk are being damaged by the local authorities claiming the challenge to support schools. But the future of our line, this has got to be addressed. I hope recent changes will help rectify the situation. And we will be watching and monitoring. One has to ask oneself, particularly because there's been too much focus on the school's organisation and view program, that as we talk in the closure of several good middle schools, which in turn, as we talk in the new councils happening to be built in many of our primary schools to take the future up to a new level. As we talk of the challenge of one of my group regarding the closure of Blackwell Ash Primary School and others, we've learned to see that the county council is now consulting on ways to defend further closures. Yes, we are aware that the raising of our program has had some early success. And I was having too pleased to attend the recent awards ceremony that saw a project that was dear to my heart in my area that I had nominated and provided for winning one of the awards. And I hope others will learn by this. But one has to ask, is everyone committed to this initially? Is everyone behind it and aware of it? Given about the change, we all hope it will. I'm pleased, also pleased to see that following the exposure, albeit we see in the interview with one of my councillors, the fact that she managed to get the subject of children not being educated in school on the agenda of the first education scrutiny committee. And as we talk, purposes are now being registered, inspected and some even closed down due to safety issues. In October of last year, the county council finally managed to add source highway services to external company Kia MG after the debacle earlier in the year and the latest third big, third part of the last moment. And what I know you provide, well, I think we can all say that the jury still have the service they are given. The headlines I can see in the local media have highly been quoted in the past few months. There have been significant TV troubles, extraordinary delays and hefty increases in council funded projects. I'm rather aware that in Suffolk, a very bad winter in which our highways have a severe bad weather. But I would try to say the new ten, new five, has severely dampened their reputation of repairing potholes throughout the county. Let me give you just one example. I told someone in the main street of one of my villages to be repaired at least four times to my notice. And each time within a few days of the repair, it suggests that is before. One question about the new ten, why? We're informed by the work inside that suggests a temporary repair as we do not have the right material to provide a temporary repair directly. Do you have any for mother? I think not. We have also seen the introduction of the Endeavour car and a long bit of that has been done to help the portfolio of our citizens. Do you have any for mine? I think not. This is to replace the extremely successful Explore car with what has happened since its launch. And it's high, I believe, I'm correctly saying, the Explore car had over twenty-eight thousand car volumes. Whilst I believe the Endeavour car has not yet attracted a... thousand car volume, whilst I believe the Endeavour card has not yet attracted a thousand. What's for more? Where have the other seven thousand users? Finally, I'd like to finish on the positive note. Even though the Suffolk Coastal Heath and Letham Power Big Unit saw drastic reduction in their funds fund government under locally, which is often been a real organisation for their sources, to form a joint team, although keeping their own individual identities, both of these units have been extremely successful in obtaining grants from outside sources to enable important projects to be undertaken in their respective areas. An extremely successful funding project has just reached its conclusion in the Suffolk Coastal Heath AOV. This will bring benefits to tourists, inhabitants and businesses alike, as well as a loss to be funded touching the tide project and for managing the masterpiece in Denabell that was equally successful in just finishing. The Suffolk Coastal Heath management plan has been adopted by all the local authorities and enjoyed the successful launch. Such is the importance of these areas, areas for businesses bringing convenience and an active team, partnership and plan is essential, and hopefully within the next year we will see extension to the AOV to be ratified, with the inclusion of the Suffolk side of the store. Although in Essex, I can assure you all it will retain the title Suffolk Coastal Heath AOV. We will be watching, we will be listening and we will be working with you wherever possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Woodster. Cross to councillor Eriar, thank you.
Thank you. In your elevation to your roles, I'm sure you're playing a non partisan hard right wing. Nice to see Mark B still here in the last meeting. The councillor, I think it's come today with twenty eight percent of the support of the council chamber, according to the statistics from my colleague on my right here. And it's our fortieth anniversary as a councillor. And I think the question, I didn't realise it's forty years until the radio phone, the answer is do a radio phone, it's on dry time. You know, I hadn't been made aware of our forty years. Are we fit for purpose? I think that was a key question that we need to ask ourselves. And certainly from the Greens' perspective, we would say no. We would like to move towards a unitary government, second, in Suffolk, and a lot of authorities have been doing that, as you know, Bevel in Suffolk, Forest Heath in St Evansbury, Waving with Suffolk Coastal and Itsukki in Greater Ittus. And we really would like to see unitaries go down that road, because we do think that's the best way of actually dealing with the kind of funding crisis that we face here in Suffolk. And there's a lot of playing around, tinkering around, and we don't think that's very useful. We believe Small is a beautiful chairman in terms of how the government can be delivered and across Suffolk, with seven hundred odd thousand people, one thousand four hundred and sixty six square miles, we don't think that is worthy. And I think we do need to bear in mind the results of the election last week, in the Euro election, where we saw a disconnect from large parts of our population in our politics, a disengagement particularly with young people. I spoke to two or three young people, I'll take them, they were young, they were in their thirties, who still haven't voted, and we've got a real problem with not connecting with young people on these issues. And I think smaller local unitaries really will focus people around responsibility, around locality, and I think we really need to see that, because people do feel very disconnected. And that is leading to voting for the intolerance that we see from over there in the election that we, that I took part in last week, and the leaflet sort of flowing through your door, suggesting that everything's really, really bad in this country, when actually it's not as bad as they suggest it is. But I do think we need to do work, I think we need to seriously do some work around moving to unitary government, so that when we do have a fresh election, we work with that new administration to push that forward. Because we're not going to be able to deal with these cuts in any other way. And we've got general election just a year from now, and I think we could do some sensitive work about saying, how is that going to work out going forward? And we'd like to see that happen. And that's just the only question I need tonight on Friday afternoon, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Eriar. Thank you everyone. This concludes agenda item number thirteen, and now we move on to item number fourteen, the appointment of committee and chair. Agenda item will be reported by the chief executive, and with additional information you'll be able to refer to it as being taken for this item. And I call on councillor Mark B to move the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I just really want to ask the council, before I move on to this item, to really ask if members would be happy if we dealt with items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I spoke to eighteen on block. That would be acceptable, acceptable to you as a chairman. But yeah, tell us more, because I don't know if there's going to be any discussion on these issues. We could accept them on board, I don't think opposition would. If you're happy, do you have?
Councillor Orton, I think you're raising a point there.
Yeah, there was just a question on the outside bodies. Should I just raise that now? I'm a question put to me by Ross Scott, now elevated to the Baroness in Market, who said she wondered why the council was no longer represented on the North Sea Commission, which is something which we're working with our continental partners, and it's really important, as we have such a huge coastline, some very, very important issues. There was a question clearly of, would you look at that again?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, councillor Orton, getting it late. I think that if there are these sort of items, I would suggest that they are dealt with by the Constitution Worker Party, which is cross party. We could look there, where you are on that and we could look if there are any additions to the outside bodies. I know in the past we tried to slim this down and be very strict about the number of outside bodies that we actually thought involved in. But clearly if there is a case for them, then clearly if there needs a representation, we can look at it.
Call on councillor Newman, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Three, pointed information on, and congratulations, of course, for the appointment. This is concerns, a page on the agenda item seventeen, the new Anvia LEV Transport Forum and the Norfolk Suffolk Local Transport Forum. The local transport body is actually already approved into the new Anvia LEV Transport Forum, must have been the shortest living entity of that alone. It only lasted nine months, but it is no more, it is now the LEV's Transport Committee. So, there is.
Thank you councillor Newman. A call on councillor Smith.
Chair, just a very small point, as we're taking all these items together, I'd just like to point out what was to be considered under agenda item seventeen, the appointment of councillors outside bodies. Page three, the very top item, may not be clear to people, mostly the titles do explain what they are. The very top should be this LGA New Leaf. It shouldn't have a hyphen in it. It stands for Nuclear Legacy Advisory Forum. I have the honour of chairing it, it's special interest to set up under the auspices of the Local Government Association. So, and it should be still, it should just be called ULEF. That aside, just for information. Thank you, Chair. It's on the paper after committee allocations. I noticed that on the scrutiny committees, the three chairs are Conservatives. I find that very difficult to understand how you can have a Conservative chair scrutinising a Conservative administration. I think if the administrative office were fully behind the scrutiny function, they would allow a member of one of the other parties to chair a scrutiny committee.
There there. Thank you. Thank you councillor Bosby. And now move to councillor Stringer.
Very grateful, Chair. I've happened to take on this on block, but just on the committee allocations, I noticed there's a number of seats from the ruling administration that are to be confirmed. And I know it can be very difficult to get names out of groups of people, no matter how fractious. But I think, can I be assured that they will come from core persuasions of your group?
Thank you councillor Lee.
Very happy to follow that. Just the comments that have been made on that, I can hear what you're saying about the championship of scrutiny, but it has been the practice of this council for some time that the administration has chaired scrutiny. I know that may not be acceptable, and it will continue to be unacceptable for the opposition parties. But listening to councillor Stringer, I don't think you necessarily feel that the Conservative group doesn't come without some challenges, some time, but we move on from all of those. But we said that a healthy vote, we have to vote. And I think that can clearly be shown in having chairman of the Labour Party. In fact, my own blog, for, I became leader of this council, I chaired the scrutiny commission for, I chaired the local transport scrutiny committee with a number of members here, and we were very non partisan in the way that we approached these things. We were certainly not the sort of people that are long, may that continue. And so, Mr Chairman, while I'm on my feet, in order to move these forward, I don't believe there are, there were any other hands. I'd like to move, if I may, on block, items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And I think that councillor Newman is having to...
You can have it on again. Thank you. That's carried.